Sincerely appreciate your coming, but very unfortunately, we lost one of our colleague from the House of Representatives, which we hope God in his infinite mercy will do and pray for him. So we have to pray for him. Akun, please pray for him. Okay, let's do one minute silence. May his gentle rest and perfect peace. Amen. Okay, thank you very much. I think before we proceed, we need our colleagues to introduce themselves so that we can start.
May we please rise for the national anthem. Sit. Your Excellency, the President of the Senate of the Federal Republic of Nigeria, represented by the Chairman of the Senate Committee on Navy, Senator Olubengadani, the Chairman of the Senate Committee on Tertiary Institutions and third fund with members, members of the House of Representatives, representatives of various ministries and other government agencies, Royal Fathers, other stakeholders, the press, distinguished ladies and gentlemen. Once again, we welcome you to the Senate of the Federal Republic of Nigeria for this very important public hearing that will be looking into five bills, establishment of various institutions to save time. At this, on that note, I now invite, having said the opening prayer, I would now invite the Chairman of this committee to please approach the podium and welcome us. Let's welcome the singular Senator Dan Dusse. Mohammed.
Thank you very much. I think before we do the welcome address, it is important our colleagues to introduce themselves. We can start from the right.
Mr. Chairman, my respected colleagues, Royal Fathers and guests, our guests. My name is Mustafa Habib. I represent Gagawa Southwest, a member of this committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, distinguished colleagues, our guests. My name is Senator Ibrahim Khalid. I represent Kaduna North Senatorial District from Kaduna State, a member of this committee.
Thank you, Chairman, my colleagues, invited guest. Where there is a north, there is a south. I represent the people of Kaduna South Senatorial District, Sunday Marshall Katoen. Thank you.
My Chairman, Chairman of the Senate Committee on Tertiary Education, distinguished invited guests, particularly the Bongom of Joss and other first-class chiefs from Plato. I am Senator Dicket Plang, Senator representing Plato Central Senatorial District. Thank you for this opportunity.
Our Chairman, very distinguished colleagues. I am Otumba Bengadaniel, representing Ogun East Senatorial District. I am also standing in today for the Senate President.
Mr. Chairman, distinguished colleagues, our Royal Fathers, distinguished guests. I am Nasir Usanazangondora. I represent Kassana North.
Mr. Chairman, distinguished senators. I am Representative Sally Sugarako Koko, representing Mayama Koko Bese Parako Swaye. I'm from Kebi State. Thank you.
I would now invite the Chairman of the Senate Committee on Tertiary Institutions and third fund to please approach the podium for his welcome remarks.
Good afternoon. I'm Senator Odandusei Montar Mohammed, representing Kassana South. By the lip of the Senate, I'm the Chairman of the Senate Committee on Tertiary Institutions and Third Fund. Distinguished colleagues, esteemed guests, our members of the public. It is with honor and responsibility that I welcome you all to this significant public hearing on critical bills before the committee today. Our agenda is focused on advancing education, technology and industry in our greater nation through the establishment and reformation of key educational institutions. Today we will deliberate on the following bills. And one. The Tertiary College of Aviation Technology, Elaro-Remo-Ogun State, Establishment Bill 2024, SV52. With this bill, we aim to establish a Tertiary College dedicated to aviation technology in Ela-Remo-Ogun State, positioning Nigeria as a leader in aviation education and training within the region. The second bill is the Bill of the Federal University, Benin-Kebi, Establishment Bill 2024, SV224. The bill aimed to establish a new federal university in Benin-Kebi State, which will play a pivotal role in expanding high education opportunity and fostering academic excellence in the region. The third bill is the Federal University of Applied Sciences, Mancho, Kaduna State, Establishment Bill 2024, SV13. The bill proposed the creation of a university specializing in applied science in Mancho, Kaduna State, to drive innovation, research and development in practical science discipline. The fourth bill, the Nigerian Institute of Mining and Geoscience, repeal and enactment bill 2024, SV12. This bill seek to repeal and re-enact the existing legislation to enhance the capacity and effectiveness of the Nigerian Institute of Mining and Geoscience, ensuring it meets current industry standard and advance our nation exploration and scientific research. The fifth bill is the Federal University of Technology, Elaro-Ogun State, Establishment Bill 2024, SV345. This bill intend to establish a university in Elaro-Ogun State, aim at producing skilled graduate who will contribute significantly to technological advancement and industrial growth in Nigeria. As we come, men's the public hearing, I urge all stakeholders, including education expert, industry leaders, community representative and concerned citizens to actively participate and share their insight. Your contribution are invaluable to ensure that this legislation meets the need and expression of our people. Together, let us work to build a brighter future for Nigeria through strategic investment in education, technology and industry. Before we commence, after extensive deliberation and after wider consultation and considering the unfortunate situation we find ourselves for losing one of our colleagues, it is aligned with our mandate that we suspend our legislative functions. That is why the chamber is now closed. But considering the fact of our esteemed guests that came from far away, some of them even live from UK to come to this very important event and also some of them from far away within the country they came to this very important event. We've talked, it is not good, we should disappoint our esteemed guests. So that is why we want to make it short and precise and brief so that the movers of the bill, the sponsor of the bills will be responsible to address all other correspondence will be layers to the committee so that we can save time and also mourn our colleague that we just finished prayer and also do a one-minute silent for him. I think it's unfortunate and that is why we will not have liberty of time to take each and every person that comes here today to make his presentation for this very important event. And we are going to also step down the bills that the senators sponsored since they are not around because we are not supposed to take them. We have more than 20 bills, we will put them in the subsequent public hearing. Thank you very much and God bless Federal Republic of Nigeria.
Thank you very much, Chairman, Senate Committee on Tertiary Institutions and Third Fund. Before we proceed, I'd like to make two announcements. The first announcement is to respectfully play with us to put our mobile phones, our mobile phones on the silent mode to avoid distractions in the course of the business place. And secondly, to recognize another distinguished senator, Senator B. Odebé. Senator B. Odebé at the extreme, we recognize him. We'll now move to the next item on the program, which will be Address of His Excellency, the President of the Senate, who is being stood in for by the Chairman of the Senate Committee on Navy, Senator Otumba Olubengadani. Please welcome the representative of the President of the Senate.
Our most distinguished Chairman of this great committee, the Committee on Tertiary Institutions and Third Fund, most distinguished Senator Dan Dusse, Montari Mohammed, I recognize you. I must also see this opportunity to thank our Chairman because I am aware that he came back early this morning from an overseas tour in order to be present in this occasion. My most distinguished colleagues, the upper chambers and of course in the House of Representatives. Permit me to use his eminence, the Bongom Joss, Bouba Gang, as a point of contact for all the other Royal Fathers that are here and of course all the MDA's. I'm aware that the Federal Ministry of Education is very well represented and I'm happy that the National Board of Technical Education is also here. I recognize all the stakeholders and of course all the various representatives of other agencies that are here, gentlemen of the press, distinguished ladies and gentlemen. Permit me to read the address of the President of the Senate, who has to quickly go and attend another very urgent national assignment. Good afternoon, invited guests, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you all for honoring the Senate Committee on Tertiary Institutions and Third Funds to be here for this important event leading to the enactment of a legal framework of the following bills. One, the Federal University Benin-Kebi, Establishment Bill 2024, SV224. Two, the Nigerian Institute of Mining and Geosciences, repeal and enactment bill 2024, 5B12. Three, the Federal College of Aviation Technology, Elara-Remo-Ogun State, Establishment Bill 2024, 5B52. Four, the Federal University of Applied Sciences, Mancho, in Kaduna State, Establishment Bill 2024, SV13. And finally, the Federal University of Technology, Elara-Ogun State, Establishment Bill 2024, SV345. I must commend the Senate Committee on Tertiary Institutions and Third Fund for its determination to support the actualization of the mandate of the tenth Senate while making concerted efforts to ensure access to education in the country through engagement with stakeholders to contribute their quota to these tasks of legislation and revamping the Nigerian education sector. I also commend the painstaking effort of the sponsors of these five bills. This effort is in line with our mandate to review the availability of facilities for our growing population and in light of the need to bridge gaps in education and provide the required manpower for development. The proposals have therefore emanated from the understanding the sponsors have about the different geographical locations and their conclusions that decisions are best suitable for the people from current circumstances. It is a global best practice for authorities to continually assess available opportunities for citizens in locations and to seek ways of remaining them through appropriate government actions. I am confident that greater input is expected from you as Nigerians, most especially stakeholders in the education sector and representatives of the host committees who are in a better position to air their views on the need to establish these schools as well as the benefit derived from the institutions. On its part, the Senate will not relent in giving Nigerians impactful demonstrations in ensuring access to education for all across the country. Let me assure you that the Senate Committee on Tertiary Institutions and Third Fund will consider the memoranda sent in by organizations and associations to serve as a basis for the actualization of this exercise. At this junction, I have the singular honor and privilege of the President of the Senate to formally declare this public hearing open. God bless you all while wishing you successful deliberations. Thank you all for your time.
That was the speech of His Excellency, the President of the Senate, read to us by the Chairman of the Senate Committee on Navy, Senator Otumba Olubengadani. Distinguished ladies and gentlemen, we'll call on University of Applied Sciences, Mancho, Kaduna, to be presented to us by Senator Marshall Katoen, Kaduna South Senatorial District. The President of the Senate, here represented by Senator Otumba Bengadaniel, the Chairman of this committee, my distinguished colleagues, invited guests. Let me especially recognize our traditional rulers and also recognize the Governor of my state and the deputy who are here represented and a very large delegation from Kaduna State that I Distinguished ladies and gentlemen, I have rightly titled my presentation. We stand to make history today. Reason being that the establishment of this federal university will be the first federal presence in my Senatorial District. Today's public hearing by the Senate Committee on Tertiary Institutions and Third Fund on the proposed Federal University of Applied Sciences, Mancho, Kaduna State is a historic event in our collective pursuit of knowledge. As Benjamin Franklin once said, investing in knowledge is the key to future prosperity. We are here not only to witness but also to actively participate in this pivotal moment in the educational advancement of Kaduna South Senatorial District and by extension Kaduna State and Nigeria. The establishment of this university with its unique focus on applied science holds immense promise for us. Given the transformative role education plays in the development of every nation and society, this university is posed to challenge, to channel the untapped potential of individuals into the most beneficial avenues of growth, offering a beacon of hope for our collective future. Our urgent need to establish the Federal University of Applied Sciences, Mancho, is underscored by the stark reality that despite the significant population of my Senatorial District, the opportunities for tertiary education are severely limited. Many of our ambitious students are forced to seek tertiary education outside the state. This pressing issue further accentuates the necessity of a federal tertiary institution within my Senatorial District. In addition, this Federal University of Applied Sciences has the objectives of providing the following. One, instruction, training and research in applied sciences that will produce technicians and skilled personnel required for related industries within and outside the country as opposed to the regular theory in normal or regular universities. Two, it will also act as agents and catalysts through postgraduate training, research and innovation for the effective and economic utilization, exploitation and conservation of our country's natural, economic and human resources. This will not only enhance our national development but also stimulate the local economy, creating job opportunities and fostering growth. Three, it will also encourage the advancement of learning and to hold out to all persons without distinction of race, creed, sex or political conviction the opportunity of acquiring a high education in applied sciences. The Federal University of Applied Sciences is designed to identify and address society's technological challenges and needs. It aims to provide solutions within the context of national development, thereby playing a crucial role in shaping our future. To equally provide and promote sound basic scientific training as a foundation for the development of technology and applied sciences taking into account indigenous culture and the need to enhance national unity. It will disseminate to the public and industries any results of the research or studies in developments pertaining to any branch of applied sciences to collaborate with other similar institutions within and outside Nigeria for the realization of its mandates. Finally, it was established appropriate relationships with other national and international institutions involved in training, research and development of studies in the areas of applied sciences among other objectives. If we consider all the above objectives and situate them in an environment lacking them, the result would be poverty, unemployment, poor health, shorter life expectancy, gender inequality and a poor economy. Education, apart from being an integral part of any modern society, is also a fundamental human right for everyone. That's why with the proposed Federal University of Applied Sciences, Mancho, we would be entrenching the right for everyone from the privileged position that tertiary education has been in my zone. I also want to thank our former group managing director, engineer Andrew Akubu, who has always encouraged the education of our students in the sciences for finding time to also be here with us. I thank you so much. With this, history has been made by by this committee with the proposed establishment of the Federal University of Applied Sciences, Manchuk, in Kaduna State. I thank you very much. Thank you very much, distinguished Senator Sandeep Marsha Katon. Next, we'll be listening to distinguished Senator Solomon Adella Olamelekon, Ogun West Senatorial District, to talk to us about the Federal University of Technology in Ilaru, Ogun State. Distinguished Senator Olamelekon.
The Chairman, Senate Committee on Education, the distinguished members of this committee, Your Excellency, the former Governor of Ogun State, and now Senator representing Ogun East, our invited guest, ladies and gentlemen. I stand before you today as the sponsor of a bill seeking the establishment of Federal Investor of Technology Ilaru, Ogun State, on today, Tuesday, the 16th of July, 2024. I am delighted to once again appear before this important committee on this important bill for the establishment of Federal Investor of Technology Ilaru through the upgrade of an existing tertiary institution, namely the Federal Polytechnic, Ilaru. I recall that I presented the bill in the Eighth Senate, and it was read for the first time in the Alu Chambers of the Senate on 6 April, 2017, but could not proceed further following the commencement of the Ninth Senate. I once again presented the bill, and it was read for the first time on the 15th of October, 2019. Unlike in the Eighth Senate, the bill passed through the Second and the Third Reading and eventual passage into law by the Ninth Senate. The bill was referred to the House of Representative of Concorde, but this is not happened until the end of the Ninth National Assembly. On the merit of the case for the upgrade of the Federal Polytechnic Ilaru to Federal Investor of Technology Ilaru, I once again presented the bill afresh for passage accordingly to our tradition. Norwithstanding its passage by the Ninth Senate, I look forward to an eventual passage and assent during this Tenth National Assembly. Mister Chairman, my distinguished colleague, the imperative for this establishment of this technology university is informed mostly by the expansion and development of the polytechnic that was established in 1979, some thirty-eight years ago, as well as the latitude for massive expansion in terms of vast land space. It is worthy of note that the polytechnic has many infrastructural facilities which many state-owned universities and probably private-owned universities cannot boast of. Ironically, those states and the newly established Federal University have today been granted a National University Commission accreditation and are running courses at full-fledged universities. For emphasis, let me restate that the university, when established, will, among other things, one, encourage the advancement of learning and to hold out of all persons without distinction of race, creed, sex, or political conviction. Two, develop and offer academic and professional programs leading to a world of certificate, first degree, postgraduate research, diploma, and higher degrees with emphasis on planning, developmental and adaptive skills in technology, applied sciences, and allied professional discipline. Three, produce mature technologies of higher cadence and capacity not only to understand the technological need of Nigeria as a nation, but to exploit existing technological infrastructure and improve on needs to develop the new ones. Four, collaborate with other national and international institutions involved in training and development of technology with a view of promoting governance, leadership, and management skills among technologists. Five, identify the technological need of the society with a view to finding solution to them within the context of overall national development. Mister Chairman, distinguished colleague, let me say that in our ongoing developmental drive, our economy require a high level of technical, scientific, and technological skill for its effective operation. There is therefore the need for establishment of our own technology university to produce adequate human resources if we are not to continue to rely on foreigners at a very huge cost. It is also worthy to note that the establishment of this university, we go a long way in providing human resources to the major industrial center in Nigeria within the short distances to its location in Ilaru, namely the Agbara Otah Industrial Estate, the Ikeja Industrial Estate, as well as the Leke Industrial Complex unraveling before us. Furthermore, the establishment of the university in Ogun State will also go a long way in balancing the spread of educational infrastructure in the state and other parts of the nation. Among the three senatorial districts of Ogun State, the senatorial district where this proposed university is cited is the only one without a state of federal government-owned university, with the two other senatorial districts having an upward of two state of federal government-owned universities located there. However, it is noteworthy that none of these universities located in the state are technology-based universities. I have no doubt that the enactment of this bill will help in transforming technological education fortune of Nigeria through upgrade of the developed institution of the Federal Polytechnic, Ilaru. Once again, I thank you for this being, and I say God bless you.
Thank you very much, Senator Adella Solomon Olamelekon. The next we shall be listening to will be Senator Otumba Olubanga Daniels. He'll be talking to us on the Federal College of Aviation Technology in Lara Remo, Ogun State.
Good afternoon once again, and permit me to extend all protocols duly established. I was wearing the cap of the Senate President Alero, and now I have another cap as the person who is presenting this bill for the establishment of the Federal College of Aviation Technology in Lara Remo in Ogun State. I'm delighted to be here at this public hearing of our committee. The Senate Committee on Tertiary Institutions and Third Fund are the sponsor of this bill for an act to establish the Federal College of Aviation Technology in Lara Remo, Ogun State, and related matters as B-52. You will recall that this bill was first read on the floor of the Nigerian Senate on the 10th of October, 2023, and the second reading on the 15th of November, 2023. This bill essentially aims to upgrade an existing technical college to a fully-fledged Federal College of Aviation Technology in order to provide full-time courses in various specializations in the aviation industry and to make provision for the general administration of the college and the related matters. Let me tell you, dear stakeholders, that one of the important things that favor this bill is that, once passed, this will establish the first presence of any federal institution in our senatorial district of Ogun East. Let me also inform our stakeholders that it is also going to be the first aviation school in all the southern states of Nigeria. No doubt, Nigeria has made significant progress in aviation technology. Yet, there are still challenges to address. These include the need for continued investment in infrastructure development, enhancements of safety and security measures, and the promotion of research and innovation in aviation technology. By addressing these challenges, Nigeria can further strengthen this aviation sector, boost economic growth, and promote connectivity both domestically and internationally. The establishment of the Aviation Technology College in Lara Remo, Ogun State will no doubt boost academic training and researches in the areas aircraft maintenance, air traffic control, pilot training, while complementing the existing Nigerian College of Aviation in Zaria. Interestingly, Ogun State Government, as you may be aware, already has an existing gateway international cargo airport in Nisha Remo, and also planning an aerothropolis, a city whose development will be centered around the airport. The existing ten car garage in Lara Remo is in disuse and can conveniently begin to offer the courses for the Federal College of Aviation Technology in Lara Remo, which effectively means that we are not talking of a green field and the need to begin to go and establish new for land to start something new. There are already existing infrastructures which are not being used. We can be converted, and if you so approved, we can even start within the next few months to operate that institution. In concluding, Mister Chairman, let me profusely thank my constituents and all the stakeholders who traveled from home to be part of this public hearing. Our KBC, represented by Adelu Adelé, is here. Thank you very much for coming. Our honorable members from the Ogun State House of Assembly are present. Thank you for coming. Our Argon Chair, the longest-serving Argon Chair in Ogun State, Honorable John Obafemi, is also here. Thank you very much for coming. I want to specifically thank the President of the Senate, his extensive state of God's Obota Quabio, for his sterling leadership of the Ten Senate and the maturity and stability he has offered. I want to once again appreciate our Chairman, the Chairman of this Procedures Committee, while I give all thanks to the President and Commander-in-Chief of this big country, President Bola Ahmed Tinu. Thank you all for listening.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you very much. Next will be distinguished Senator Adamu Alero, Kebi Central, to talk to us about the Federal University Benin Kebi, Kebi State Establishment Bill, Senator Alero.
My distinguished colleagues, in particular, the Chairman of the Senate Committee on Tertiary Education, distinguished senators and members of the Committee of Tertiary Education, the vice-translators that are here, I don't know how many, but I understand there are so many vice-translators, very distinguished personalities, members of the fourth estate of the real, good afternoon to all of you. The bill I'm about to sponsor is about the establishment of the Federal University Benin Kebi. It is interesting to know that this bill, so that the university, has already been established. It was established as far back as 2013. It has been operating without legal framework. I sponsored this bill in the Ninth Senate. It scales through the first reading, second reading, and the public hearing. It was even passed, but unfortunately, Mister President could not attend to it. And by the nature and tradition of the Senate, anything that has not been assented by the President, it has to start again. So I therefore sponsor this bill with the hope that it will scale through the third reading, and it will be assented by President Bola Ahmed Tinu. Mister Chairman, the Federal University Benin Kebi was established by federal government in Benin Kebi in 2013, together with two other universities, namely Federal University Gashua, that is in Yobe State, Federal University Zamfara in Gushaw. It is interesting to know that I was a governor of Kebi State where the university is located. Kebi State happens to be one of the less educationally developed states. It is therefore was great optimism that we welcome its establishment in the state. It is therefore my pleasure to sponsor the bill for the enactment of enabling law for the university that will not only benefit development of education in Kebi State, but the country in general. Mister Chairman, distinguished colleagues, permit me to inform the committee that with the approval of the National University Commission, academic activities started in the university during the 2014-2015 academic session and the takeoff of the site donated by Kebi State Government. Kebi State Government donated aside just to facilitate the establishment of the university. It has never happened anywhere in Nigeria. Kebi State was so magnanimous to donate aside, not only donated aside, even building structures to ensure that this university was established. The two foundation faculties were arts, social, and management sciences with nine and eleven departments respectively. A total of 507 students were admitted as pioneer undergraduates. Later in 2014, the College of Health Sciences and Faculty of Environmental Sciences were established with one and three departments respectively. In 2019, the National University Commission granted approval.
in Ela Remo a variable alternative to elevate this pressure, allowing both institutions to maintain high standards of training. In conclusion, the establishment of this College of Aviation Technology in Ela Remo will not compete with the one in Zaria, but rather complement and enhance Nigeria's overall capacity for aviation technology and training. This strategic addition will address geographical imbalances, increase national training capacity, allow for specialization, and position Nigeria as a leading aviation and education hub in Africa. Thank you very much and God bless.
Next to speak, Engineer Yakubu, Andrew Yakubu, former GMD. Sir, you have two minutes. You may skip the protocol, just two minutes, sir.
Thank you, MC. I will skip protocol after recognizing the representative of the Senate President here present and the Chairman of this esteemed committee, our, and the others, members of this esteemed committee. I also want to recognize our beloved son, the sponsor of this, of our bill, Senator Son de Marshall Person, who has timely articulated this bill. We have made some submissions that have spelled out very clear statistics of who we are. We span across 26,000 kilometers, we are a population of more than 6 million, we have close to 200 professors, we have a very large student registration base, and we have one of the oldest engineering centers in the world, that is the NOC culture. The NOC culture is situated in southern part of Kaduna. And when we were at the iron stage of engineering, Britain, the United Kingdom that came to colonize us, were still on wood and bronze. So if we say today that that location on the map of Nigeria has no federal presence in terms of university, I want to be careful to say that it's a big omission, and I'm happy with this tenth assembly for receiving our bill. The bill from our son to establish that institution and to attempt to correct this big omission over many years. And let me also thank this Senate for the well-articulated thinking of reversing back to the old national anthem, where equity, where no one is oppressed, and if we find ourselves under mood, then Nigeria will be blessed, as it was blessed when we were singing the old national anthem. Let me also thank Senator Carly, Ibrahim Carly, for teaming up and granting his support to us. That shows, that underscores the importance of what we are enjoying today, that is new Kaduna state. And I'm sure, and I'm sure Senator Lawal would have loved to be here too, just to tell you that the three senatorial zones are fully in support. I am standing here on behalf of the Honorable Ishaya Dariakau, who is the President and Chairman of the Southern Kaduna Leadership Council, who would have loved to be here, but he sent me, although I'm very happy that he's not here, even though I wouldn't have had the opportunity to stand here. So I tell you most sincerely, and I thank you very much, we are fully, fully in support of this bill, fully in support, and we are saying that this, this bill should have been, should have come and should have been taken on board yesterday. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Next is Director Federal Polytechnic Ilaro, Dr. Mukel Akinde. Director Federal Poly Ilaro, Dr. Mukel Akinde. You have two minutes, you may skip the protocol, sir.
Good afternoon. Permit me to stand on the very strong established protocol, but in doing so, it would not be good for me to be here as the Director Federal Poly Ilaro, Director of the foremost polytechnic in Nigeria, Dr. Akinde Mukahay, by not greeting or extending fellowship to the senator representing Ogun State that are here, especially the former Governor of Ogun State, Senator Bing Gardane, and also the Oklahoma of Yewaland and Ogun West in general, that is the senator representing Ogun West, the most distinguished Senator Adiola Olamileko, aka Yai. I am here to support the bill as presented by the Senator Olamileko Yai. As you are aware, Federal Polytechnic Ilaro was created in 1979, several years ago, and that it's seated on 898 hectares of land, and it is the only federal institution in Ogun West. So as I'm here speaking, the entire students, the staff, and the community is in support of the bill. The reasons are not far fetched. The polytechnic as it is has more than one or two six programs in engineering, applied sciences, communication, management studies, etc. And in the ranking of the National Board for Technical Education, even though we are second-generation polytechnic, permit me to inform you, we are rated number two, between the like of a caduna polytechnic, Yaba College of Technology as a second-generation polytechnic. As I'm saying, the polytechnic house is peopled with human and infrastructural resources. For example, as a second-generation polytechnic, we have over 60 PhD holder across various schools. Let me also say that, one, we have collaborations with a lot of institutions. We are currently running a degree program of another university that is pretending the fact that we have infrastructure to support that particular bill that is being sponsored by our senator. Let me also say that we have very good collaboration with Takoradi Technical University in Ghana. We've been doing a lot of collaborative work in a way to propel engineering resource of the polytechnic. So if the bill is finally approved, it simply means that the senatorial district will have the only federal university in that Ogun West. So as I am here, I have a well-articulated view from the polytechnic since I'm being timed and I'm being, I'm not unmindful of that time, that will be presented, and I know that I am wish, I am wishing and I'm praying that in this case, this particular bill will scale the hurdle. The polytechnic is well ready, the students, as I'm here, I'm not only here, let me also inform you, the President of my student union is seated there, the registrar is there, all the management staff of that polytechnic is here to support this bill because it's going to change the narrative for Ogun West. Thank you, God bless you for your attention. I also made a full referendum as I'm leaving this place, since I'm being timed. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Very quickly before we proceed, I'd like to recognize distinguished Senator Ned Woko, Senator Ned Woko from Delta State, with the red cap, recognize you. Distinguished Senator Mustafa from Yobe State, sir, you're welcome, recognize you. Thank you so very much. From Kaduna State, we have a delegation of comrade Aoudu Amba, Vice President NLC, Bishop J N Kwashi, Professor Yusuf Turaqi, Mr. Samuel Tabara, President Sokapu, Mr. Jerry Adams, Chairman Kaduna State Revenue Service, Rare Admirer Bombay, Ferguson, Dr. Ephraim Gojey, Major General Ante, and of course, Engineer Martins Galadima, representing the Government of Kaduna State, Honorable Danjuma Henry, Deputy Speaker Kaduna State, and of course, Reverend Dangji E R C C President. You're welcome to the Senate of the Federal Republic of Nigeria. We now invite a ranking senator, a ranking member, he has been ranked in the Senate, the House of Reps, ranking in the Senate, Senator Solomon Adiola Olamileko. We'll call him double ranking, so please just make a few remarks before we still proceed. Senator Olamileko.
Thank you very much for having me again. Thank you, Mr. Chairman of distinguished committee members. My remark will be very direct. Number one, let me add a little fears that we are trying, or I'm trying, to scrap the polytechnic for university as expressed in some quarters. It is not what we are doing, that is not the target. As you're all aware, this polytechnic has been in existence since 1979, and with the Director of the Polytechnic speaking in the same direction with me, it clearly shows that I have the support of not only the people, even of the polytechnic, that we should migrate to a university. And in doing that, it will, it will only assist to put that school on the world map on the world stage. We are not, and looking at the discrepancies currently going on between the award of degrees between HND and the U and the university degree, you know, you would know that it's quite worrisome, where you would be describing that an HND holder is not on the same level with a BSc holder. We are still fighting that, speaking that degree is degree, but they are saying that you still need to attend some diploma courses at the civil service before you can be granted the same status with a BSc holder. And I'm saying this that while we are looking at that, we should always be forward-looking. What I am, why I'm sponsoring this bill this afternoon is to not only assist my senatorial district, but even the students, even the student, because once this polytechnic migrates into a university, all they need to do is to do one or two foundation classes and then migrate to the university levels, which I believe is a right step in the right direction. So I call on the National Association of Polytechnic Students to please calm down, see reason with us as to why I'm going towards this direction, and any other polytechnic that have the same status and they are looking towards this direction and the bill sponsor on the floor of the Senate, I will support it. I will support it because I'm doing one today and I want everybody to support it. So I am resolute, I am forward-looking, and I want everybody from the polytechnic institution to know that I am not against the polytechnic institution. I am an holder of HND, the higher national diploma as well, though other professional courses, ICANN, CITN, also I'm a member as a fellow, so I cannot destroy an institution which I belong. But what I'm doing is, I'm taking the right step in the right direction, and I want you to join me on this lane so that together we can have a brand-new University of Technology Ilaro. Thank you and God bless you.
Thank you, thank you. On behalf of the delegation from Kaduna State, I have the name of Engineer Martins Galadima. Do please come forward. Engineer Martins Galadima, studying in for delegation from Kaduna State. Engineer Obadiah Nkome, Director General Mining and Audstral Office, you're welcome, sir.
Distinguished senators, in particular, the Senate President, heavily represented by Senator Otumba Daniels, the Chairman of Senate Committee, Tachary Institution and Ted Fund, all the senators here present, distinguished ladies and gentlemen, good day to all of us. Her Excellency, the Deputy Governor of Kaduna State, would have loved to be here herself, but for other state functions, she directed that I come here to, first of all, congratulate our dear Senator, Senator Katu, for sponsoring a bill that every other person in his own three is in support of. And she also directed that I come over and request the tenth Senate to continue with a good job and ensure that the bill is passed into law. And the people of Southern Kaduna are solely in support of the bill, just like the government, like she directed, is also in support of the bill. Thank you so very much for listening and God bless you.
So the Vice Chancellor of the Federal, Vice Chancellor.
Thank you very much. I will call Kebi State if they have the President to present for the next.
The Senate President, the Federal Republic of Nigeria, the Chairman, Senate Committee on Tachary Education and Ted Fund, our distinguished Senator Adamu Alero, representing Kebi Central in the Senate of the Federal Republic of Nigeria. My name is Mohammed Zayyan Umar, the Vice Chancellor, Federal University Benin Kebi. Mr. Chairman, sir, it's my pleasure to be here this afternoon to say a word or two on respect of the bill sponsored by our eminent Senator, Senator Adamu Alero. It may interest you to know that the Federal University Benin Kebi was established, as rightly mentioned by the Senator, in 2013, and today it is in its 11th year of existence. Over the last one decade and a half, the university has grown in leaps and bounds from two faculties to five faculties and a College of Health Sciences.
Thank you very much. We'll call Kebi State if they have the president to present for the next.
The Senate President, the Federal Republic of Nigeria, the Chairman, Senate Committee on Tashari Education and Ted Fund, our distinguished Senator Adam Olalero, representing Kebi Central in the Senate of the Federal Republic of Nigeria. My name is Mohammed Zayyan Umar, the Vice Chancellor, Federal University Benin Kebi. Mr. Chairman, sir, it's my pleasure to be here this afternoon to say a word or two on respect of the bill sponsored by our eminent Senator, Senator Adam Olalero. It may interest you to know that the Federal University Benin Kebi was established, as rightly mentioned by the Senator, in 2013. And today, it is in its 11th year of existence. Over the last one decade and a half, the university has grown in leaps and bounds from two faculties to five faculties and a College of Health Sciences. The university runs degrees in 37 programs, including courses in physiology, anatomy, MBBS, nursing sciences, quantity survey, building, cultural science, sociology, education, and a host of other courses. The university has attained remarkable feats in several respects. Operating unlike many other institutions in this country from the outset in three campuses, the take-off site, the permanent site, and the College of Health Sciences campus of the university. In these campuses, monumental infrastructure development has been attained. And in the last 10 years, we have been able to graduate five sets of students who are adding value to social, economic, and political development of this country. It is my prayer therefore that the plea made by the Senator, the distinguished Senator Adam Olalero, be granted by the Senate and the bill passed by the Senate and possibly assented to by the President of the Federal Republic of Nigeria. We thank you so much for this opportunity and we look forward to receiving the law establishing the Federal University Benin Kebi Nigeria. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have five bills and this is the last. As I invite to the podium, Distinguished Senator Dicket Satso Plan, Plato Central Senatorial District, to talk to us about the Nigerian Institute of Mining and Geosciences repeal and enactment Bill 2024.
The Chairman, Senate Committee on Tashari Institution and Ted Fund, the representative of the Senate President, His Excellency, Senator Benga Daniel. Ranking senators on the high table, I'll use Senator Olalero as a point of contact to my very ranking colleagues. My dear brothers with bills today, stakeholders that are around, particularly in the mining sector. I would like to acknowledge the President of the Bongom Jos and its first-class regional rulers from Plato that are around, that are with the Senate President now and the Governor of Plato City is also around and with the Senate President to condole him, what happened? Distinguished invited guests, good afternoon.
I am Senator Dicket Plan, Senator representing the good people of Plato Central. And I am the mover of the bill directing that the foremost and one of the most endowed natural resources given to Nigerians. We should deepen our knowledge to get further in exploration, exploitation, processing, and packaging of what God has given unto us. My bill is to repeal the law or the act establishing the National Institute for Mining and Geosciences, JOSS, Act 2018. Repeal it and enact a law that will upgrade and bring into the establishment of the Nigerian-based University of Mining. The purpose of this bill is because we're endowed in mineralogy. And if God has blessed us with minerals, we have no option than to study further so that we will have sufficient experience, will be equipped to know what we have, process what we have, possess what we have, rather than having strangers around our houses. This is the purpose of the bill. I would like to read my own lead paper as regards it. Mr. President, distinguished colleagues and stakeholders here present, permit me to table before this August Assembly in July. My motivation for proposing this bill for an act to repeal the Nigerian Institute of Mining and Geosciences Act 2018 and establish the Federal University of Mining and Geosciences, JOSS, and other related matters. My distinguished colleagues and stakeholders here present, I craft your indulgence to highlight the background of this bill towards providing justification for its passage into law. You will all agree with me that the importance of the extraction and mining industry in Nigeria cannot be overlooked. This is more so when Nigeria is looking to diversify the economy that has been predominantly resting on crude oil and in the face of the current economic realities. Mining in Nigeria dates back to the 18th century, culminating into the colonial rule with the colonial masters cashing in on on the abundance of mineral sources in Nigeria and one of which is the tin ore in JOSS Plato State. The British extracted large quantities of tin ore from JOSS that led to the establishment of Miniature Mining Research Centre. While the one in Plato State was being established by the British, others were also being established in Ghana and India. The one established in neighboring Ghana, which started as Taqwa Technical Institute, has since metaphors into a University of Mines and Technology, offering a variety of courses ranging from mines and mining technology, geosciences, and environmental studies amongst others. The one established in Nigeria was upgraded to the Nigerian Institute of Mining and Geosciences by the Ministry of Mines and Steel Development in 2021. The institute had continued to exist without any legal framework until 2018. In 2018, when an en bloc law act was enacted, the institute has done fairly well since its establishment by offering diploma courses in the area of mining and geosciences with about three campuses and functionable laboratories in existence. All that is required at the moment is to upgrade the institute to a degree-awarding institution. My highly respected colleagues, ladies and gentlemen, while the country is looking to diversity by utilizing the gains from the mining sector, cases of illegal mining are also around. And there are also reported incidents of underutilization of the mining and extraction industry in general, leading to loss of billions of naira in revenue to government. This problem is largely due to debt of information and knowledge in the area of geosciences and mining. The proposed bill, if passed into law, will support efforts aimed at positioning Nigerians' mining sector as a viable sector for diversifying the country's economy away from its excessive dependence on income from crude oil exports. Establishing the Federal University of Mining and Geosciences, JOSS, will enable Nigeria build the domestic human capacity, knowledge and skills required for the development of the mining sector. The proposed university will be supervised by the Federal Ministry of Mining and Steel Development. My distinguished colleagues, ladies and gentlemen, with the establishment of the university, it is expected that it will deepen knowledge on mineral exploration, exploitation, and instill knowledge of many facets of mining resources management, including geosciences and engineering to the citizenry. I am aware that the university is I am aware that the country is currently growing under economic downturn and seeking ways to cut down on the cost of governance by checking the purification of institutions. It is heartwarming that this particular institute has been in existence for many years with structures and lecturers already engaged. Although converting it to a university would require more staffing, I believe that the benefits of establishing this university would outweigh whatever cost is incurred as an overall benefit that will enable Plato and Nigeria at large benefit. This is also in tandem with the need to build specialization in areas that are critical to nation-building. Hence, the establishment of a special university like the University of Agriculture, Petroleum University, Marine University, Medical University, Army University, and so on and so forth. It is worthy of note that Nigeria does not have a university that has to do with mineralogical research despite the abundance of mineral resources in our dear country. Most importantly, minerals and technology go hand in hand. It will not be good for our country not to deepen knowledge and research into the godly and graciously given endowment to our country. Distinguished colleagues, my brothers, neglecting this area will allow only exploited illegal miners to keep exploiting the nation due to lack of knowledge incapacity in the area of our citizens. It is in the light of the realities highlighted above, I implore you all to give this bill your full support as it has the capacity to turn around the country's abundant resources into profitable assets for the nation. I thank you all for coming and may God Almighty grant the request of this bill. I'd like this opportunity, before coming, I acknowledge.
Thank you so much, sir. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you very much. Distinguished ladies and gentlemen, before we finally draw the curtains, I'd like to inform us for the records that we have in our midst, the Executive Governor of Plato State, His Excellency Kalab Manasseh Mutfang. Sir, you're welcome to the Senate of the Federal Republic of Nigeria. I also have the mandate of the distinguished senators to respectfully invite His Excellency to please approach the podium this way and make a few remarks. Your Excellency. High Chief Abiola Ogundokun, recognize you, sir.
The President of the 10th Senate, Senator Godswe Lakpabio, and the entire leadership of the Nigerian Senate, the Chairman of the Senate Committee on Mining and all the distinguished members of this committee, great Nigerians who are here, distinguished leaders from various walks of life. It is indeed an honor and privilege for me to be here this afternoon to make a few remarks regarding this very auspicious bill that has passed second reading and today is undergoing public hearing, the bill to establish the Nigerian Institute of Mining and Geosciences into a full-fledged university. I believe no Nigerian today is ignorant of the fact that the oil and gas industry that has driven our economy since its discovery many years ago needs an alternative. And all the studies have shown that the biggest potential for driving the Nigerian economy rests in the mining sector. Although mining activities have gone on for as long as Nigeria has existed, all that we have done is to scratch the surface. And the time has come, and the time is now, when we need to be able to put some bit of organization to give that sector a direction. It therefore goes without saying that this bill has become an absolute necessity at a time like this. I would therefore want to urge this distinguished Senate to give this bill a speedy passage, not only because of the potential impact it has on the economy and the employment it will generate because the entire value chain of the mineral sector will be developed and expanded. And I want to say that when this bill is passed, it has no other place to be located other than JOSS Plato State. Because mining in Nigeria began on the plateau, the first regulatory framework for mining in Nigeria for the mining, the Northern Protectorate, was established in 1903 and in JOSS Plato State. For many years, the JOSS Plato State carried the headquarters of the Nigerian Mining Corporation. And it was for no other reason but for the fact that the quantities of mineral resources available on the plateau are possibly second to none in Nigeria. And since the dismantling of the Nigerian Mining Corporation, we have hosted the Nigerian Institute of Geo-Mining, providing our own assets as state government to be able to host that institution. So there is no need to reinvent the wheel. The wheel is already turning on the plateau and all that the National Assembly needs to do is to give it the necessary push to take it to the next level. I therefore want to thank the Senate for considering this bill through the first and second readings and bringing us to the point of public hearing. And I'm sure that there is no Nigerian who will resist this bill. And not only will we support this bill, but to also support that this bill should make a pronouncement as to the location of this proposed university. And I dare say that there is no better place to put it than the home of mining in Nigeria, the home of peace and tourism. Thank you, Mr. Senate President, and God bless.
Thank you very much, Your Excellency, the Executive Governor of Plato State for having us. We appreciate your coming. This is show a sincere commitment towards the establishment and repealing of this bill, which will be a very important development to the economic development of this country. Because after exhausting all the time, we want to move for adjournment of this very important gathering. And we will appreciate those that have contribution because it's not in our norm to, as a Senate, to host this public hearing. But due to the death of, unfortunately, the death of our colleague and considering the fact of your coming from far away, we save time, save resources to do this. from far away, we save time, save resources to do this and make it brief and precise. So we are moving for adjournment. Senator Alero.
Mr Chairman, distinguished colleagues, distinguished invited guests, in particular, His Excellency, the Governor of Plato State, having exhausted all the items of agenda, I wish to move for the adjournment of this public hearing soon today.
Mr Chairman, I'm Emos Johanna Ademunot. I second the motion that this public hearing be adjourned. I so second.